Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-9. If other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. All councilors are remotely attending this meeting. Roll call, please.
Counselor Goleb?
Here.
Counselor Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Mastra Totoro?
Here.
Councilors Gilmore and Perry have notified us that they are unable to attend tonight. Counselor Wondolowski?
Here.
Counselor Healy?
Here.
Counselor Garrett?
Here.
Counselor Minhaas?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Toronto?
I'm here.
President Bottomly?
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum. Did I call Counselor Bullock?
No, you didn't.
I'm so sorry.
I'm here, though.
Thank you. President Bottomly, you have a quorum.
Could I have a counselor read the rules to suspend the rules of procedure on page three?
I'm happy to read those. The City Council order... The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council waive the rules of procedure. Eight... Is that eight? Eight? Order and disposition of business to allow the agenda items to be taken out of order.
We need a second?
Second, Ricketts?
And a roll call vote. Oh, we need to debate to do this. Anyone have any comments on this? Hearing none? A roll call vote?
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Mastra Totoro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Wondolowski?
Right.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
So I just have a brief statement before we go into public comment. As you all know, this is an incredibly emotional... There's a lot of intensity surrounding this subject of the resolution we're going to discuss tonight. Since about 2:00 PM today, we received 2,367 emails, approximately 95 to 100, from Greenfield residents. I want to remind everyone that this is a place of respect for diverse opinions and to remember that your city councilors are people too. We have full-time jobs, sometimes multiple jobs, and families. Our position as a city councilor is not our livelihood, it is service. Once this resolution has been voted on, we will continue to work for you week after week, month after month, on city business. Much is asked of us, but I will also ask of all those in attendance today, please speak with kindness and respect your neighbors during their time to speak. Public comment at tonight's special council meeting will be for a total of 30 minutes, two minutes per person for Greenfield residents only. If you are a Greenfield resident and would like to speak under public comment at tonight's special council meeting, please add your name and address. Please do not use the chat for any purpose, as this would constitute a violation of open meeting law. Upon conclusion, if you're allowed two minutes, you may mute it and the next speaker will be called. If you interrupt any speaker, you will be ejected from the meeting. And still with that, I would like to start public comment. Just get that list.
And could everyone please be sure to mute if you're not speaking? Because there was an echo while Counselor Bottomly was speaking there, and I want to make sure that we don't have that for others.
Thank you. We will start with Richard Whitty.
My name is Richard Whitty. I'm a resident of Greenfield for 30 years. I'm sorry.
Keep on.
You're good.
My video doesn't start, so I would appreciate it if you allowed it. My name is Richard Whitty. I'm a resident of Greenfield for 30 years. 24 years at Freeman Drive in Precinct 5. I'm Jewish, but I've been active in the Greenfield synagogue for... Since the time since I've been here. I'm not particularly active now. I have a son and grandchildren that live in Israel near the Bangorian Airport. And it's... My attitude about Israel is that it's "we", that it's family. I care about it intimately. I certainly don't agree with all policies, but I do feel gutturally any assaults, verbal or military. The history of this conflict is that Hamas has been conducting terror upon Israeli civilians over a 30-year period since its inception and particularly at times when Israel and Palestinian Authority are close to forming peace. And internally, Hamas is a tyranny. There is no elections, no freedom of press, no freedom of speech. Dissenters are assassinated by Hamas. They're not accountable to international law because they're not a state. And that creates a discontinuity in that Israel is...
I'm sorry, your two minutes is up. But I appreciate you. Thank you so much. Next, I'll go to Koby Lef.
Hi, I'm Koby. I'm in Precinct 1, Greenfield resident. Thank you, councilors, for dedicating tonight to this vital ceasefire resolution. As a Jew, I stand firmly for peace. In these dark days of rising global hatred, now is the time to recognize that violence will not create peace or safety, but only more violence. As our US tax dollars fund a genocide disproportionately slaughtering children, it is our responsibility as a town to raise our voices that we want the violence to end. This sort of ceasefire resolution may rightfully be seen as a disruption to our orderly status quo. Protests can be loud and make people uncomfortable. But now is the time to sacrifice our personal comfort to protect the safety of the 2 million people starving and under siege in Gaza. I'll close with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King's 1963 "Letter from a Birmingham Jail", where he observes that a massive obstacle to freedom is, quote, "the white moderate, who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice, who constantly says, 'I agree with you in the goal you seek, but I cannot agree with your methods of direct action', who paternalistically believes he can set the timetable for another man's freedom', end quote. Let us set the timetable for peace and freedom to this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mike Nord?
Thank you, councilors. I'm a relatively new resident of Greenfield. On January 31st, the petitions began to circulate, calling on the Greenfield City Council to pass a permanent ceasefire resolution. As of today, that petition has gathered 371 signatures. The overwhelming majority are from Greenfield residents. And I know many councilors have also received copies of a form letter from people saying that they are against this resolution. It's my understanding that the overwhelming majority of the senders of those letters do not live in Greenfield, the state, or possibly even the country. I urge you to value the opinions of your constituents more than the efforts of a well-funded national campaign that is blanketly targeting every town in this country that has a ceasefire resolution on its agenda. They don't have any stake in our local community or knowledge of where we live. Our local Jewish community is largely in support of this resolution, as we have seen demonstrated by the letter to the City Council from Jewish residents of Greenfield, from over 71 Jewish households in Greenfield. I urge you to vote yes on this resolution, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you. Molly Merritt?
Hi, Molly Merritt, Precinct 7. Thank you for your attention to this issue and for your consideration of this resolution. Your constituents are urging you to pass a permanent Gaza ceasefire resolution because we are beyond devastated by the widespread death, destruction, and suffering that we see every day in the news. Some of you have asked why we are not taking action in regards to other situations around the world where civilians are at risk. While I can assure you that we are paying attention and taking action to advocate for various populations in harm's way, it is the sheer scale of the Gaza assault that compels us to call for the passage of this resolution. More than 12,300 children have been killed in Gaza since last October. More children have been killed in Gaza in the last four months than have been killed in conflicts around the... than have been killed in conflicts around the world in the last four years. Imagine every child in Greenfield was dead. That wouldn't even be close to 12,300. And I just want to show you something. This is a picture of my child. And this is a picture of a little girl who was killed recently in Gaza. When I see pictures of mutilated children being pulled from the rubble of bombed buildings, I see my child. And when I look at my child, I see them. My child was born early and spent three weeks in the NICU. When babies were dying in the NICU in Al Shifa Hospital in Gaza City because it was being bombed and its staff was forced by the IDF to evacuate, it pained me so deeply. When I hear stories of mothers enduring cesarean section births or children having limbs amputated without anesthesia, I remember every hospital procedure I've had and think of how miserable and painful it was, even with all the amenities of a fully functional hospital. Israel is committing war crimes by indiscriminately murdering civilians and by sentencing them to horrific deaths from lack of medical care and starvation. We are complicit in these crimes if we stand by and do nothing.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you, Molly. Karen's... I'm gonna get this wrong. Skiatetus, I think, is it? It is?
It's Skiatetus.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Skiatetus, and I have lived in Greenfield on and off for the last 50 years. I was brought up in a Hungarian Jewish household who had experienced significant losses during the Holocaust. In eight short weeks, the Hungarians had deported almost 500,000 Jews to Auschwitz, and by the end of the war, 550,000 had been murdered. Rather than going back, most of my family chose to go to Israel. Therefore, one would be hard-pressed to call me an anti-Semite. The events occurring on October 7th left most of us speechless and horrified. Initially, the Israeli response made some sense as Israel remains an island in a hostile sea. However, since that time, I've been appalled at Israel's relentless murder of Palestinians, regardless of their political affiliations. The actions of the Israeli government have done little to destroy Hamas and have in fact created a new generation of angry Palestinians who will grow to form their own resistance. Attacks on Israelis have always prompted a swift and harsh response. We can therefore assume that this line of action has proven itself to be ineffective as it has done little to stop future attacks. The Israeli government must make way for a lasting peace that will protect Palestinians and Israelis alike and ensure a safe life for all Semitic people. If they do not, Israel has proven itself to be as godless and predatory as so many who have gone before them. Please vote to encourage a ceasefire.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephanie Duklos.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Stephanie Duklos, Precinct 8. I want to thank you for your time. I can appreciate that you must have been overwhelmed with activist emails and phone calls. And from my understanding, shamefully, some quite verbally abusive at times. That's unprofessionalism within the ranks of our city councilors, and I am pretty divisive. Following our most recent election, where 73% of the voters voted for hope, for change, and for cooperation, despite their views on national politics. So I guess the most pressing, most important resolution requiring a special meeting is this ceasefire resolution, something you have no power to enforce. What will your vote change? Do you recognize the fact that many constituents don't even know what's in this resolution? Do you think that the people who elected you want you to address national platforms at city council meetings? I feel inclined to remind councilors that the cast of a city council vote is supposed to reflect the voice of your constituents and not solely the voice of small groups of local activists that would bully you into more contentious resolutions in the future for consideration, being that this is a national election cycle. 109,000 people died from the opioid overdose. There's a lot of things that affect the city of Greenfield. This is not something that we can change. You can bring this to the State House. You can bring it to the Washington DC, if you must. You could bring it to the military complexes that feed these war efforts. This does nothing but bring divisiveness within the town. And I think our city is working towards being a cohesive unit for once in a long time. The actions of other councilors, I'm not going to specifically name people, but I don't think that the manner in which this got pushed to this level was okay.
I'm afraid that's your time.
Well, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. I know this is really hard.
Thank you. Next, we have Ursa Shearer.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. My name is Ursa Shearer. I live on Madison Circle in Precinct 6, and I strongly support this council voting for a ceasefire resolution. I want to talk briefly about Jewish safety. As a Jewish resident of Greenfield, as an adult and as a child in nearby Orange, I've experienced antisemitism. As a kid, my sister and I had students hold up a sign with a swastika when we were getting off the school bus. When I moved to Greenfield a dozen years ago, there was a swastika spray painted on the sidewalk near my synagogue, Temple Israel, here in town. Our fantastic DPW immediately responded, and it was removed same day. But these types of moments have happened throughout my life, and many Jews have experienced something similar. The intergenerational fear that Jews carry is a real thing, and I truly believe that that fear is being manipulated and used in ways that I find deeply distressing in Israel's war on Gaza, as a Jew, as a parent, as a human. But my story is not one solely of fear. I want to name the power of solidarity and the safety of solidarity. In the last five months, I've felt safe. I've been connected to a wide-ranging group of Jews, Israelis, Palestinians, and neighbors who are united in a shared desire for ceasefire and full return of hostages. Not all Jews experience fear in the same way or experience safety in the same way, and I wanted to share my own experience of both. After growing up in Western Massachusetts as the only Jewish family in my hometown, finding this Jewish community in Greenfield has been a blessing. And in such a dark, heartbreaking time, that blessing is all the more welcome. I want to thank the councilors for making space for this issue and seeing the connections between the local and global and devoting your time to something that connects us all. Ceasefire now.
Thank you. Next is Emily Miller.
Hi. 33 Russell Street, Precinct 5. I'm reading a letter that was signed by over 63 Jewish residents of Greenfield representing more than 96 people, residents of Greenfield of all ages. Thanks for listening. We asked the Greenfield City Council to vote in favor of a resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. We are signing onto this letter as Jewish residents of Greenfield and Franklin County. There were over 55 signatures from Franklin County residents. We hope that our community can come together to call for peace. We hope that our city, joining with more than 70 other US municipalities that have passed ceasefire resolutions, can send a strong message to our state and federal decision-makers that this senseless loss of life must end. We view our support of a ceasefire as in alignment with our Jewish histories and values. As members of a people that have survived genocide and mass pogroms, we oppose attacking or mistreating innocent civilians of any faith, nationality, or ethnicity. We firmly reject the notion that calling for peace and for freedom, justice, and equality for Palestinians is anti-Semitic. Instead, for many of us, it is specifically because we are Jewish that speaking out is a necessity. We refuse to remain silent when atrocities are being committed. We urge you to join us in calling for an end to US complicity in the bombing and annihilation of Gaza and for the removal of obstacles to urgently needed humanitarian aid. Thank you so much for holding this meeting and for supporting the resolution.
Thank you. Next is Mick Friedman.
Yeah, hi there. I live at 9 Myrtle Street, and I'm a resident of Greenfield, obviously. And I'm also on the Board of Directors of Temple Israel, the only synagogue in Franklin County. And I'm not here to represent the temple. I'm representing myself, but I'm also representing the long line of survivors that I come from. My family, a lot of it was wiped out in the Holocaust. My grandparents survived, but only barely. My mother was born in Poland and settled. She escaped to Israel where she grew up. And I'm here to say, please support the ceasefire. And the reason this is so passionate, I'm so passionate about this, is that intergenerational trauma is so real. And I know this from my own family's experience. I saw it pass down from my grandparents to my parents. I see it in myself, and even in my children. I see that this long line of horrors that my family experienced is still being experienced in real time all these decades later. And what's going on now in Gaza is going to be felt for a very long time, which is why we need to do all we can, even in our own town council, to try to make a statement and do what we can to stop things and send a message and let this be the first step and many steps to advocacy. So please consider voting in favor of the ceasefire. And I know this is a hard job, that this is probably not what you signed up for as town councilors, but as someone who understands a little piece of just how serious this is and how long-lasting it is. I'm really grateful for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Taylor Ortiz?
Hi, my name's Taylor. I'm 200 Green River Road, and I'm a recent addition to the Greenfield community. I'm here to support the resolution for ceasefire because it is the only thing that seems to make sense to me. I've heard a lot of folks ask what the point of these local ceasefire resolutions are. And I think it's to say, as a community, that we don't stand by the war crimes and the atrocities that are being committed in Gaza. I think it's actually a really logical and rational thing, and I think it's very difficult to come up with any arguments against it. I don't really see how it could be seen as a radical or aggressive stance to take to say that we don't agree with our tax money being used to kill thousands of children. I don't think there is really another side to the argument of we should not be allowing thousands of children to be killed in their homes. I want to say thank you for taking on this resolution and for allowing public comments. And I really hope that, as a community, we can say that we don't agree with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next, Ryan Whitney?
Ryan Whitney. Greenfield, Mass, Precinct 8. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the City Council, I stand forth before you today to address a critical matter that affects not only our city but our fundamental principles of governance. It's about the instance on forcing our City Council to take public stance on national issues. The role of our City Council members is clear. To serve the best interests of our local community, to address local concerns, and to ensure the smooth functioning of our city. Asking them to take a position on a national issue is not beyond their purview, but also unfair. Our City Council members are not elected to represent partisan ideology or to engage in national politics debates. They are here to focus on issues that directly impact our cities, our schools, our parks, and our neighbors. Furthermore, demanding public stance on national issues encourages upon their personal lives and beliefs. We must respect their right to privacy and understand that their personal opinions on national matters did not influence their ability to govern effectively at the local level. Let us remember that diversity of opinions exists within our community, and it is not the role of our City Council to dictate or endorse specific viewpoints on national issues. Instead, let us encourage civil discourse in respect of differing perspectives. In conclusion, I argue everyone to refocus our efforts on the issues that truly matter to our city. Let's allow our City Council members to fulfill their duties without undue pressure to weigh in on national matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Emma Munson.
Hi, good evening. My name's Emma Munson Blatt. I am from Precinct 4. Sorry about the little screen. I'm visiting family, so I'm in my little sister's purple bedroom, childhood bedroom. So I just wanted to be sure, though, that I would be able to join tonight just to say a couple things. So I am Jewish. Born and raised, not incredibly religious, but very much important to my culture. So I just wanted to briefly say a couple things to the individual talking about Hamas. I'm not trying to start an argument. You... I just want to make a point that you are ignoring the country of Palestine and the raping and pillaging 70-plus years ago of their land and the Nakba, the catastrophe where Palestinians were marked stateless, just like my grandma Molly was marked stateless in Nazi-occupied Germany. And then, you know, of course, Israel went on to occupy more and more of that land. So interesting comparison there. And as I just mentioned, my grandma Molly survived the Holocaust. So I don't understand how we, as a people, can condone the same thing. We, as Jews, should and do know better, and we have seen this before. Never again truly means never again. Briefly, I will say, my great-grandfather, my grandma's father, Adolf Reim, was murdered in the second camp he was in. Not in a gas chamber, not by a bullet, but the conditions in Dachau, which is the name of the camp. He had a weak GI system. His death was the result of starvation and easily preventable diseases. Exactly the same thing that is happening to Palestinians right now. That is why we desperately need this ceasefire. I appreciate your...
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you so much. Alice Timmons is next? Sorry, I'm not hearing anyone.
There, wait. Did it come on now? Hi, I'm at 106 Haywood.
There, wait, did it come on now? Hi, I'm at 106 Haywood Street. Alice Timmons. My twin sister raised her family in Israel on a kibbutz for the last thirty years. I identify as Dakota. My family traces its lineage through massacres on the native side, and that my twin sister's family identifies her family. They identify as human beings. They don't identify as Jewish. They don't identify as Christian or Muslim, as human beings. We need to speak up. We need to bear witness to what is happening. And we need to acknowledge that this is a turning point for a whole culture and civilization, that it is a genocide that is happening now as we speak. And we are funding it. We are doing this. Somebody else is not doing it. Our government is doing this. It's paying for it, and we need to speak up and say that we support a ceasefire, a permanent ceasefire. Thank you. And thank you for having this chance to speak.
Thank you. Avi Flynn is next.
Thank you. I just like want to offer a lot of appreciation for all the work that you all do as councillors and how, how much effort on an emotional level that is and how much we've been asking you to show up for this. And I hope that in this...
Oops, hold on a second. I...
You got muted.
Hmm.
Can I continue?
Yeah, now you're back.
We can hear you now. Great.
Great. That we can be in this moment and move from our hearts and see that there is power in this room, and both the constituents who have showed up and in the positions that you hold, and see that you saying something together, that you support the ceasefire, is something that people with even more power and our government will listen to, along with the other municipalities that have also made that bold statement. It's not easy, but it's powerful, and I'm really grateful for you considering it and sitting through some moments that can feel hard and uncomfortable, but it's really meaningful. I'm also a Jewish resident of Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty O'Neill.
Hello, my name is Patty. I live in Precinct One. And I also just want to thank you so much for, for listening to all of us about this issue. This is very much one of those issues that I think this is important to speak about locally, this mindset of working to a constructive, positive piece of something that I would like for Greenfield to reflect and amplify that on upwards. And I just want to leave time for them to speak. So thank you so much.
Thank you. The next is Emily Green.
Hello, I'm so glad that you're giving us a chance to be here with you when you vote for the ceasefire. And I am totally in favor of it. I have to say...
Sorry, could we have your name and address? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Emily Green, 260 and a half Davis Street. Thank you. Sorry. You know, looking at what's happening in Gaza, there's no other way to look at it except that it's total destruction and genocide. And it doesn't mean that what happened on October 7th is okay either, but what's going on now and not going to stop is not okay. And as a retired nurse, when I think about what they're trying to do in the hospitals in Gaza, only a third of them are actually functional. And I think about what it would have been like for me to get, have to get on my hands and knees and take care of a patient on the floor, and that is happening. To walk into a patient's room or up to them who's in dire pain and have to tell them, "I'm sorry, we have no pain medicine," and have to hold someone down who has to have an amputation because we have no anesthesia to give to that patient. And the healthcare system is only one of the things that's being destroyed in Gaza, as well as in the West Bank. And I, I want to read just one story that has really touched my heart. It's "The dangers to paramedics were highlighted in late January of this year, when two were killed trying to reach a six-year-old girl named Hain Rajab, who was trapped in her family car in Gaza City and surrounded by the bodies of dead relatives after the car came under gunfire. She called and begged for help, but they, of course, couldn't get there, and she died. She died along with 12,000 Palestinian children since..."
I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you so much for, for coming and speaking. We have Ben Grosskupp next.
Can we just go home? Hello. My name is Ben Grosskupp, 108 Crescent Street, resident of Greenfield for ten years. There is a rich tradition in New England, going back to the earliest days of the republic, where town governments have used their moral power as democratic institutions to separate themselves from the policies of the national government. This includes policies like slavery, nuclear weapons, the Patriot Act, and the Iraq War. Today, our national government's policy is military and diplomatic support for the Israeli government to carry out what the International Criminal Court has found grounds to believe may plausibly be a genocide. More than 30,000 Palestinians have been killed by bombs. Now, the Gazan population faces death and starvation, but by starvation and disease, while hundreds of aid trucks wait outside the Rafa Crossing, held back by Israel's blockade from helping the people of Gaza. The federal tax money Greenfield residents pay is used by our government for bombs Israel uses to slaughter Palestinians in Gaza and destroy their infrastructure and homes. Amherst and Northampton have already passed resolutions calling for this to end. Leiden, Holyoke, Pittsfield, East Hampton all have efforts underway to do the same. Ceasefire is a moderate demand. The word ceasefire has begun crossing the lips of multiple national officials, including our Vice President, but it is not backed up by action. The only action that will meaningfully persuade the current Israeli government to stop its onslaught is to do what this resolution says: withhold US funding to Israel. Withhold US military funding to Israel until its government agrees to a permanent and sustained ceasefire. Thank you so much for your attention to this issue. It is desperately important for the people of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Ursa Cher.
I already got to speak.
Oh, Natasha Pika.
Yes, right here. Thank you. Thank you for, for allowing us to speak.
Oops, sorry. Can I get your name and address?
Yes, Precinct Three, Birch Street, Greenfield, 45 Birch Street. Thank you for the work that you do. I'm an educator. My entire life, I've been an educator. My first job working with children was when I was fourteen years old as daycare and a preschool worker, and I continue to this day in college. Yesterday, I heard that Israel and the IDF destroyed every single school and university in Gaza in the first 100 days of its assault. This is not a casualty of this so-called war. This is part of an intentional and systematic effort to disappear an entire culture, along with murdering and disappearing its people, to replace them with illegal Israeli settlers. Is this not the definition of ethnic cleansing? The International Court of Justice agrees. Can we not agree that all of this is wrong? And can we not agree to say that in public? A vote against this ceasefire resolution is not neutrality. It's not staying in the middle. It's siding with Israel's actions. Let's be clear about that. Please take a stand against this genocide and this ethnic cleansing. Please make a statement in support of ceasefire on behalf of Greenfield. Please vote yes. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you. Emery Powell, next.
Hi, my name's Emery Powell. I live in Precinct, Precinct One, and I'm strongly for a ceasefire resolution. At last month's town hall, there was some, in my opinion, righteous anger expressed towards those who were in disagreement with the ceasefire clause. And I just want to ask that if that anger made any of you uncomfortable, as I believe some, it made some of you, and I understand that discomfort, but if it made you uncomfortable because you believe that being liberal is about acceptance, I would like you to ask what you think that we should mean by acceptance. Not all issues have two sides. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. We're getting close to the end of our time, probably two more speakers. So next is Paki Wieland.
Thank you. And thanks, thank you to the people who brought this, this ceasefire resolution, and thank you to the city council for taking it up in this special meeting. I dare say that most of us were not of age when the Nazis did their Holocaust.
Sorry, I'd interrupt. I just need your name and address, too.
Oh, sorry. Paki Wieland, 54 High Street, Greenfield. We were not allowed or able in, in, in the forties, thirties and forties to speak up, and we certainly weren't able during the genocide of the indigenous people on this continent. But we have the opportunity now to do just that, to speak up, to be on the right side of history, to allow our consciences to be articulated, both to our neighbors here in Western Massachusetts and to our government officials in Washington DC, who, for whom we have some weight, and, and it is incumbent on us to, to act on our consciences. So all I can do is say thank you to the people who brought this, and to you, city councillors, who are, who have taken it up in this special, in this special meeting. Please vote for the ceasefire, and, and let's do all we can to bring about a more just world. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Emma Munson-Blatt, next. Emma?
Sorry, I already did my comment. Sorry, that was a mistake. Thank you, though.
Yes, Jeremy Ebersole.
Hello, thank you so much, councillors, for the opportunity here. I, like many others, want to urge your support of this really important ceasefire resolution. Acknowledging...
I need your name and address.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Jeremy Ebersole, 17 Beach Street, here in Greenfield, Precinct Eight. Thank you. And urging your support, recognizing that the Hamas terrorist attacks on Israel were heinous and unconscionable. The Israeli state-sponsored and US-backed response has been dramatically disproportionate and continues to disproportionately impact primarily innocent civilians and cause starvation across Gaza. Let us make good on our involvement in the Mayors for Peace Initiative and join cities from our municipalities from around the country, as diverse as Atlanta, my own hometown of Akron, Ohio, and our neighbors here in Northampton and Amherst and many others, in saying that we must stop the endless cycle of bloodshed. We need to remember, I believe, that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. There is no such thing as not our problem. Every voice for peace makes a difference in this world, and I hope that we will be one of those and encourage your support, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. I believe this is getting to our last speaker, if I'm reading this right. Aviv Nissen-Wig.
Hi, thank you. My name's Aviv Nissen-Wig, and I live on Conway Street, 98 Conway Street, in Precinct Eight. Thank you, councillors, for making space for this conversation. And to all my fellow Greenfield residents here, I feel really honored to be living here with you. I'm asking you to vote to pass a ceasefire resolution today. I am the grandchild of Holocaust survivors, one of whom was in the Warsaw Ghetto, and another who survived Auschwitz. I'm also the grandchild of a Jewish-American soldier who fought the Nazis in Germany and helped liberate a concentration camp. I am also an Israeli-American, and my care for the Jewish people is great, no matter where they live. But I am here, speaking to you, because right now, we are witnessing something in Gaza that is almost beyond comprehension. In the last several months, 30,000 Gazans have been killed by the Israeli military using American weapons. What we are asking for today is very small in the face of all that, but it is also quite simple. Councillors, it is within your power and appropriate to this moment to vote to pass this ceasefire resolution. The killing must stop. The killing must always stop. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone who spoke, and all of you for attending. That's the end of our public comment period. And before I have the motion read, I just wanted to clear up a couple of things for councillors, because there were questions about the numbers of votes we need to pass this. So in reviewing it and talking to our parliamentarian, and please ask me if you have questions on this, but just as a review, a quorum of city councils, councillors, are needed to conduct business, which is seven members, which we have. And here's where it gets a little confusing. We need seven votes in the affirmative to adopt ordinances and appropriations. Since this is a resolution, it's neither of those, so we revert to Roberts Rules of Order, which state only an affirmative vote of the majority of those present is needed to pass the motion. So again, it just needs a simple majority of councillors present to pass. And as we go forward, since I cannot see most of you, the clerk's office is helping me. So if you could enter your name, your last name, councillors, in the chat, so I can determine an order to speak, will be really helpful. Otherwise, I may need you to speak out if we don't recognize you. So if I could have, perhaps Councillor Bullock, read the motion and the resolution?
Yep. Order number FY24-074. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached Exhibit A resolution titled "A Resolution Supporting a Permanent Ceasefire and Preventing Further Loss of Human Life in Gaza." Greenfield, Mass, City Council Resolution Supporting a Permanent Ceasefire and Preventing Further Loss of Human Life in Gaza, whereas all human life is precious and the targeting of civilians, no matter their faith, nationality, or ethnicity, is a violation of international law. And whereas between October 7th, 2023, and March 20th, 2024, more than ex-Palestinians, nearly half of them children, and ex-Israelis have been killed, and tens of thousands more Palestinians wounded. Over 90% of the population of Gaza has been displaced, and approximately 130 Israeli hostages remain in Hamas's captivity. And whereas hundreds of thousands of Palestinians in Gaza are at imminent risk of death by starvation and disease, and there is an increasing risk of wider regional and global war resulting from the current crisis that would threaten millions of lives, including Americans. Whereas the Massachusetts portion of the $3.2 billion of aid sent to the US to Israel annually is estimated to be approximately $130 million, yet a significant number of Greenfield residents struggle to afford housing and living expenses and access to healthcare, and there's an urgent need for the city's infrastructure improvements. Whereas the United States federal government holds immense diplomatic and appropriations power to save Palestinian and Israeli lives, now therefore be it resolved that the Greenfield City Council calls on all members of our congressional delegations to join us in urging the Biden administration to call for and facilitate an immediate permanent ceasefire for the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza and the release of all hostages and political prisoners on all sides. And be it further resolved that the Greenfield City Council condemns anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab, Islamophobic, and all xenophobic rhetoric and attacks locally, nationally, and internationally. And be it further resolved that the Greenfield City Council urges cessation of the US military funding to Israel paid by US tax dollars until such time as there is a permanent and sustained ceasefire in place in Gaza and all hostages have been released, and further urges, urges the redirection of military spending toward goals that support the lives and livelihoods of the American public. Be it further resolved that the Greenfield City Council directs the city clerk to forward copies of this resolution to the offices of the... to the offices of President Biden, US Senator Markey and Warren, and Congressman McGovern. And I believe that there will be a motion to amend the correct numbers.
Let me just get a second first. I don't know if I missed that.
A second. Gordon.
Uh, councillor Gordon. Um, yes, so we'll open this up for discussion. Uh, councillor Bullock or Gordon, would you like to go first as sponsors of this?
Well, first I'd like to bring an amendment to the numbers, just to clarify. Um, so I move to amend, um, in paragraph three, the strike where it says March twentieth and change it to March eighteenth. Um, and to strike the X's and add the number thirty-two thousand for the Palestinians and strike the second X's and add one thousand four hundred for Israelis.
Yes.
Just want to make it currently accurate.
Clerk's office here, too.
Sure.
So that is a motion to amend, which needs a second.
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 Um, and oh, sorry, who is the second?
Mary Ann Bullock.
And we will open this up for discussion to the amendment. And hold on a second, do you have chat? Okay. So councillor Garrett?
Wait, can we clarify, though, that, can we just clarify, this is comment on the amendment?
Yes, thank you.
I, uh, I don't have a comment on this amendment. I was actually going to make a motion to amend, um, but I can hold that until after we're done with this.
Yeah, we have to pass this amendment before we can make another amendment.
Councillor Gordon?
Yeah, I just want to explain where these numbers came from. I mean, obviously, the date is March eighteenth. We thought this meeting would take place on March twentieth, so that was what was in the original draft. Um, and the number thirty-two thousand comes from multiple sources, including the Gaza Ministry of Health, um, and independently verified by Al Jazeera researchers from Johns Hopkins University and the London School of, uh, Tropical Health. Uh, the, the number of Israelis comes from multiple sources as well, um, including multiple Israeli media outlets. I just want to let folks know where that came from.
Well, thank you. Um, I have a list, but I think the list was populated e- even as the amendment was going forward. So I I I'll go with this list and see if people want to speak to the amendment. Um, I had gotten Garrett and then it was Tarunzo.
I was not speaking to the amendment.
So do we have anyone that wants to speak to this amendment?
No.
Okay, um. If there's no more discussion, um, can we have a roll call vote on this amendment?
This roll call vote is the amendment proposed by councillor Gordon and seconded by councillor Bullock. Councillor Gollum?
Yes.
Councillor Gordon?
Yes.
Councillor Mastertorro? Councillor Mastertorro?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Councillor Bullock?
Yes.
Councillor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Councillor Healy?
Yes.
Councillor Garrett?
Yes.
Councillor Minhaus?
Yes.
Councillor Ricketts? Councillor Ricketts? Councillor Ricketts, you are on mute. President Bottomley, with your permission, I'll come back to councillor Ricketts.
Yes.
Councillor Tarunzo?
No, I said yes. Somebody, you muted me. I was sorry.
You were on mute. Thank you. Councillor Tarunzo?
Yes.
Thank you. President Bottomley, would you like to vote?
Uh, no, thanks.
Okay. The motion passes unanimously to those voted.
Uh, I believe, uh, councillor Gordon, did you have a continuation of that?
Nope.
Do we have any more?
Next.
Do we have any more discussion of going back to the, um, resolution?
I'm, I'm sorry, President Bottomley?
Yes.
If I may, I don't know. Um, can I, I would like to alter my, I vote on the last just then.
The vote has been declared.
I believe the vote has been declared, so-
Okay, that's fine. No, yeah, it's not, it's not that big of a deal, but.
All right, so I think I will go back to the top of the original list I had, which is councillor Garrett.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to to move to amend the resolution, and I read the whole thing through as I my proposed amendments, right? Just to be clear about the process.
Well, it could get tricky if you do a really long amendment.
I don't think it will be. I'll, I'll, um, I'll do my best to keep this, you know, simple, but, um, so just with the first paragraph, I'll just read it, and then I'll say what I'm suggesting that we change. Uh, so the Greenfield Mass City Council Resolution, the first paragraph, "Supporting a permanent," uh, and then the language to strike through would be "ceasefire preventing" and replace with "peace and ceasefire to prevent further human loss of life in Gaza." In the fifth paragraph, which begins with, uh, "whereas Massachusetts, the Massachusetts portion of the three two-
Wait, hold on a second, we got to get that.
Okay.
No. Can you please re- restate your amendment to the first paragraph?
Absolutely. So the first paragraph, um, "strike ceasefire and preventing" and replace it with "peace and ceasefire to prevent."
Yep.
Okay, and then in the fifth paragraph, "strike Massachusetts portion of the three point two billion dollars of aid sent from the US to Israel annually is estimated to be approximately a hundred and thirty million" and replace it with "US government sends billions of dollars in unconditional aid to Israel each year." I can, um, I can, I I heard Kathy, if it would be helpful to send the language, I can send it directly.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I've got another bit whenever folks are ready, and again, I can send this via, you know, as a copy.
Yes.
Okay, the seventh paragraph, there's the, after the, um, the phrase facilitated immediately, there's the words "and permanent," "strike and permanent." Um, and then af-
You got to slide that? Hold on a second.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, strike and permanent.
And then after the word ceasefire, the phrase "to support a lasting peace."
Is that being inserted?
Yes.
Okay. The ninth paragraph, and this is the longest one, I promise. After the phrase "and be it further resolved," the sentences that read as such to strike, and then I'll read a line to replace it. "So that the Greenfield City Council urges cessation of US military funding to Israel paid by US tax dollars until such time as there is a permanent and sustained ceasefire in place in Gaza and all hostages have been released, and further urges the redirection of military spending towards goals to support the lives and livelihoods of the American public." Replace that with the language that the Greenfield City Council urges suspension of unconditional military aid to Israel and a redirection of military spending towards goals to support the lives and livelihoods of the American public.
Can you email that to Kathy?
I will. I, and I, again, I have one last thing, and there's no more strike throughs, but in the very last paragraph, after the, uh, "whereas Congressman McGovern," the phrase "along with our gratitude for any actions our representatives have taken and will take to work towards a lasting peace for Palestine and Israel."
Yeah, if you can email that, too.
Yeah, I'll do that right now.
We will need a second on that.
A second, Gordon.
Discussion on those amendments, we, it's going to be hard, we, that's quite a few. I can see-
I have a question.
Yeah.
So are we going to have to vote on each specific amendment separately, or are we, is this going to be one vote for the whole thing?
Well, this was presented as one vote, one motion.
Okay.
So we would be voting on all those as one motion.
Can I, I mean, can I ask councillor Garrett? What is the point of this? Can you give your reasoning? What?
Yeah, I'm-
Why do we need?
Yep, and, um, I am happy to defer if other folks want to talk to, but I also think that's a very fair question to ask. Uh, Mr. President, should I speak to that now? I I also want to send this thing to Kathy, so I don't want to delay on that either.
Um, why don't we just take a, okay, but speak and then we'll, we'll-
Okay. I think I just sent it to Kathy, so we should be good. So, um, my thinking on this is, so I I'm a history teacher. I spend a lot of time worrying about language, and so for me, like, the language of a permanent ceasefire in a situation where we have and again, this is not a resolution about debating the causes of October seventh or anything along those lines. But the phrase "permanent ceasefire," there's going to be rockets fired, and to say "permanent" is unfortunately, I think, a not a likely, likely outcome in the near term. So to say "permanent ceasefire" and coupling it with, uh, being tied into unconditioned, or aid to Israel, the idea of it being unconditional, I think, is the absolute problem. You know, giving aid to Israel with, and not treating them like any other country. Like, if we are, you know, giving aid to a country that's using it in an absolutely atrocious way, which Israel is, then that's a problem. But keeping the language so it's about peace and less about a pause that I don't think is likely to be permanent is really my motivation kind of behind this. Um, as far, I'm just kind of going through this list, you know, as far as, uh, the fifth paragraph, I mentioned changing it to billions of dollars versus a specific number. I don't have a citation in front of me. I have no doubt the people that, you know, the folks that wrote this resolution put work in it. But to keep it so it's, you know, we know it's billions, it's more contestable about the specific amounts, again, knowing that there's research. To me, the biggest concern is peace, and that's what I would love this resolution to help support, and so that's kind of my my argument behind making these changes. I know it was a lot all at once. Um, but, and I appreciate you asking the question, you know, but again, that unconditional military aid aspect, the idea that, you know, there's going to be absolutely, you know, an end, in a, an upending of all of Israeli-American relations in a quick period of time. I don't think it's likely, but I think there has to be a change as far as what we're doing, because the status quo is causing just an unbelievably terrible situation. Um, so that's, that's my motivation of that. It's basically like I'm looking at my conscience, just like everybody else, and thinking, how do I find myself saying yes to this because I think about this kind of thing a lot, and so that's really my, my motivation.
Thank you. I'm not, I I had seen Rachel's hand up, but I didn't, I, it's hard to catch everybody, so I don't know who is next. We fine with going to Rachel?
Yes.
Or sorry, councillor Gordon?
Thanks. Um, yeah, I just want to lend my support to this. I think, uh, I understand councillor Garrett's concerns, and I don't think that it makes a substantive change to the purpose of the resolution that councillor Bullock and I have introduced. And, and so I just want to to say that, that I'm fine with these changes, and I think that, that those who support this resolution can rest easy that these changes don't significantly change the purpose that we're here for tonight.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this amendment? Seeing none, uh, can we have a roll call vote on those, on that one large amendment?
Yes, um, this is voting on the amendment made by councillor Garrett, seconded by councillor Gordon, and the office did receive the amended language from councillor Garrett. Thank you so much. Councillor Gollum?
Yes.
Councillor Gordon?
Yes.
Councillor Mastertorro?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Bullock?
Yes.
Councillor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Councillor Healy?
Yes.
Councillor Garrett?
Yes.
Councillor Minhaus?
No.
Councillor Ricketts?
Yes.
Councillor Tarunzo?
I'm staying.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I'm staying.
Thank you. And does the president wish to vote?
Uh, no, thanks.
The motion passes by majority.
So we'll go back to this original motion, and I would like to continue down the first list I had to, to be talk about the amended motion, sorry, not the amended, but total motion. And I, the next name I had was Ricketts.
Hey, man, what about me?
Oh, I shoot, you're right, I had Tarunzo. Sorry, thank you.
I might be, I might be that guy, but, uh, I'd like to call this right to question.
Second?
That is a non-debatable motion, so we'll have a roll call to call a question.
On the motion to call the question, councillor Gollum?
No.
Councillor Gordon?
No.
Councillor Mastertorro?
Yes.
Councillor Bullock?
No.
Councillor Wandelowski?
No.
Councillor Healy?
Yes.
Councillor Garrett?
Yes.
Councillor Minhaus?
Yes.
Councillor Ricketts?
Yes.
Councillor Tarunzo?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
No.
Give me one moment, please. Standing by. The motion passes with six yes or no. The question is called?
So we will now be voting on the motion as amended. Do we want someone to read this whole amended motion? Or are we okay? Thoughts?
It's up to Mary Ann and Rachel, I think.
I would like to read the amended motion.
Thank you.
Someone is reading?
Yes, I believe so.
Did they have the amended language? Yeah, do you?
Do-
Yes, I, I wrote it down as, as councillor Garrett said it. So I might miss a little bit of it, but I believe I have it. Uh, so the resolution as amended states, "Greenfield City Council Resolution Supporting a Permanent Peace and Ceasefire to Prevent Further Loss of Human Life in Gaza." Whereas all human life is precious and the targeting of civilians, no matter their faith, nationality, or ethnicity, is a violation of international law. And whereas between October seventh, twenty twenty-three, and March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, more than thirty-two thousand Palestinians, nearly half of them children, and fourteen hundred Israelis have been killed, and tens of thousands more Palestinians wounded. Over ninety percent of the population of Gaza has been displaced, and approximately a hundred and thirty Israeli hostages remain in Hamas captivity. And whereas hundreds of thousands of Palestinians in Gaza are at imminent risk of death and starvation by, and disease, by starvation and disease, and there is an increasing risk of wider regional and- and there is an increasing risk of wider regional and global war resulting from the current crisis that would threaten millions of lives, including Americans. Whereas the US government sends billions of dollars in unconditional aid to Israel each year, yet a significant number of Greenfield residents struggle to afford housing and living expenses and access healthcare, and there is an urgent need for city infrastructure improvements. Whereas the United States federal government holds immense diplomatic and appropriations power to save Palestinian and Israeli lives. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Greenfield City Council calls on all members of our congressional delegation to join us in urging the Biden administration to call for and facilitate an immediate ceasefire to support a lasting peace, the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid to Gaza and the release of all hostages and political prisoners on all sides. And be it further resolved that the Greenfield City Council condemns anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab, Islamophobic, and all xenophobic rhetoric and attacks locally, nationally, and internationally. And be it further resolved that the Greenfield City Council urges a suspension of unconditional military aid to Israel and the redirection of military spending toward goals that support the lives and livelihoods of the American public. And be it further resolved that the Greenfield City Council directs the city clerk to forward copies of this resolution to the offices of President Biden, US Senators Markey and Warren, and Congressman McGovern, along with our gratitude for any actions our representatives have taken and will take to work toward a lasting peace for Palestine and Israel.
That is great. Thank you for reading that. So now we'll move to a roll call vote.
This is a roll call vote on the order as amended. Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Totoro?
Abstain.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaus?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Abstain.
Counselor Toronto?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
No.
Just one moment, please. Six yes, two abstentions, two no's. The motion passes with the six votes in favor.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Ricketts?
Second.
Thank you all.
This meeting ends at 7:14 PM. Thank you all.
Well done.
Thank you, everyone.